Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Escondido City Council. Please rise for a moment of reflection and remain standing for the flag salute.
Yes, please join me in a moment of reflection. We come together tonight to say thank you. Thank you for the privilege, the blessing, the honor it is to serve here in the city of Escondido. We come together tonight as diverse community. A community from backgrounds, different beliefs, different presence and different futures. Yet one common goal, that is the betterment of this city. We come together tonight to seek guidance, wisdom and discernment during deliberations that transpire this evening. In doing so, we lift up Councilmember Morosco, Councilmember Garcia, Councilmember Martinez, Deputy Mayor Garcia and Mayor White. May they be granted peace and wisdom as they lead our city into a bright and prosperous future. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This meeting is called to order. And we'll call Councilmember Morosco.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Garcia.
Here.
And I, Mayor White, am here. We'll go ahead and move on to our presentations and I would invite the, those with the San Diego evacuation alerting system, Jeff Murdock and Captain Kevin Toth.
Yeah, bring it a little closer and you might need to have the button to turn the mic on. There's a little button at the bottom. Sorry, Jeff. I apologize.
Thank you.
There you go.
How's that? Thank you. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers, good evening. My name is Jeff Murdock. I'm the emergency preparedness manager and I'm joined today this evening with Police Captain Kevin Toth. Tonight, we'd like to discuss with you the emergency notification information tools that public safety uses to communicate with the community and how the community can take advantage of some of those tools. We have a number of tools that we can use to reach out to the community during an emergency or need for evacuation. Tonight, we're going to focus on two major tools. The first one is Alert San Diego and the second one is a brand new tool that was implemented at the end of May of this year. First tool, Alert San Diego, was upgraded at the beginning of the year. This is a reverse 911 system that the county uses to reach out to the public. And Kevin and Captain Toth will discuss Genesis Protect. As I mentioned, Alert San Diego is our reverse 911 system. You must opt in for this system, which means you need to register your cell phone. One of the advantages of Alert San Diego is that you can register your cell phone for an address, like your home address. And if for some reason we need to notify that address or the neighborhood, you will get that, that notification on your cell phone. We're capable of sending that information out both in voice, text and email. And we also have the capability for sending out American Sign Language for those that are hearing impaired. Another system of these, Alert San Diego is the wireless emergency alerts, which I'll talk about in a minute. But with Alert San Diego, one of the nice things about it is that when you register your cell phone, you can attach it to a dress, as I mentioned, your home, but you can also use it for your business or your child's school. So if for some reason your school, child's school was in an area that an emergency was being declared, you would also get that message. Wireless alerts, we sometimes call it WIA, fills in some of the gaps. Obviously, we have visitors that come to Escondido on a regular basis and they've not registered their cell phone for an address within the city of Escondido. Additionally, our own community quite often leaves their homes and may go to Kit Carson Park or attend a council meeting. They haven't registered City Hall as one of their locations. WIA is broadcast to all cell phones within a targeted area from cell sites, so you don't have to opt in for what the wireless emergency alerts. One of the disadvantages of WIA is that it's only 90 characters. We use that basically to get a call to action. We have just enough information to tell you where, who is sending the message, what the incident is and what we need you to, what action we need you to take at that moment, as well as additional information you can see. So Alert San Diego is very important and works very closely with wireless emergency alerts to be able to fill in those spots. The types of emergency alerts you might see also, also comes from National Weather Service. As you probably are aware that we also had a fire, Spring Valley had a fire on Monday and that was followed by an earthquake in the LA area. Most of us down here in San Diego felt that particular earthquake. So now it's a great opportunity for everyone to sign up for these alerts. Even though I've been talking about Alert San Diego, for those of you who have participated, attended some of my preparedness meetings, we've been using for almost 20 years. Now it's also a great time if you've add registered for Alert San Diego to update your contact information. Reasons for updating your contact, for example, is do you have a new phone number? Have you moved? Or has your child been promoted to a new school? It's important to keep that information up to date within Alert San Diego so we can continue to send those, those alert messages. I'll now pass it over to Captain Toth to discuss the Genesis Protect app.
Oh, you might need to hit the microphone. There's a little button on the middle. It's like it'll turn green once you, sorry about it, Kevin.
Good luck. Okay. Good evening. So what is Genesis products? So Genesis is a tool that we went live with in San Diego County in May of this year. And what it does is it basically takes a map overlay of a zone and, and puts it into different geographical zones that we can then designate for certain types of status. So if you're under an evacuation warning or evacuation order, or if it's safe to return, it can be displayed on a map. Also, you can designate various types of information, shelter locations for, for people or animals or large animals, or what roads are closed, or different types of information in emergency that the public could be, need to be aware of. The advantage of the Genesis Protect app is that it gives real time information. So as, on the public safety side of things, as we're entering information about what, what areas, what zones are maybe under evacuation warning or orders, or where checkpoints are, it gives us the ability to display that to the public to, to see in real time. There is an app version of it. This is also available just via the web. So the, there is a couple of different benefits of having the app. With the app, you have the ability to set up alerts so that you can be notified automatically when whatever zone that you have designated is under, for example, an evacuation warning or order. It also notifies you when that, that it's safe to return home, which is always a big challenge for us. So you can see what roads are closed or, or where your checkpoints are, different types of information. And also, the media will have access to this information so that they could have real time information and put it out on, on news broadcasts. Therefore, where that saves us is not overwhelming our comm centers with calls or, you know, having to be at the command post to get information. We can push this information out and they can see it in real time. There is a slide at the end of this that'll kind of give you an idea of what you can do to, how you can register what, and find out what zone you live in. But a little more on the zones, we recently went to, and we used to have the old public safety map grids with, if you're familiar with the old Thomas Brothers. It was, it was kind of a block system. And the nice thing about this Genesis program is we went to zones that are more geographically aligned with the terrain. And in an urban environment, it's, it's more bracketed by major intersections and streets. So it's easier to not blatantly evacuate everybody in inconvenience to them when we only maybe need a small corner of that area. So it, it allows us a lot more control over where, where we conduct our evacuations and not. So if, if you have, download the, the app, there's, the information is to, for how you find out what zone you're in and then you can set the alerts. But if you don't have the app, the nice thing about it is this is all web based as well. So in an emergency, we can provide a link either on our socials or on our city website that would get you to this map overlay so you could get that information in a couple of different ways, as well as the media having access to this. So there's, there's multiple different medians to get this information out. But that's essentially the, the impetus behind the Genesis Protect.
So in addition, unfortunately, as the emergency preparedness manager, I can never pass up an opportunity to talk about preparedness information. One source, additional resources is the alertsandiego.org website, where you can go out and find a lot of preparedness information. As an example, a personal disaster plan is available for download in 12 different languages. Forgive me, I don't remember all 12. But in addition, for those that are sight impaired, I have also got Braille versions that I can also hand out. If someone's interested in getting a copy of that, reach out to me and I'm happy to provide that. AlertSanDiego.org also contains emergency information about disasters or other emergencies that are going on within the county. And you can have a map, you can see a map of all the different ones. The zones are also published on alertsandiego.org on their map as part of the emergency. And sometimes after emergency, there's a recovery period and there's additional information on alertsandiego.org for recovery. There is also preparedness information on the city's website and during an emergency that impacts the city of Escondido, quite often we'll put on our homepage, information about the disaster and what the residents can do. Our social media will also be used and employed during the, during the emergency. One additional resource is the SD Emergency App. You can download this either to a Android or iOS device. This is basically has a lot of the same information. That's on alertsandiego.org. It will push you on different types of notices throughout the county. It also has a list of any open shelters and maps, as well as being able to store some of your personal preparedness information in the phone, so you don't have to carry your written plan with you everywhere you go. That concludes our presentation and we are available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I downloaded two different apps. The Genesis one was one of them while I was, while you were speaking. So this is great. Thank you for preparing and sharing this information. Any of my colleagues have anything? No? No?
Thank you for the presentation. Will we be pushing this out on our social media channels so that anyone who's not watching today can also access the website?
Yes, I provide this information to our communications department already to be able to do outreach.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Very user friendly. Was able to download them as well.
Awesome. Thank you, gentlemen. There is no report out of closed session this evening and we'll move on to non-agenda public comments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have a few off agenda items. So our first speaker is Christine Jackson.
Hello? Ooh, that's loud. Hello, my name is Christine Jackson and I've lived, lived in Escondido for 27 years. I am a retired teacher and I love Escondido and I want the city to flourish and that we all feel we have a say through the people we elect, all of you. I'm here today because a while ago I read this Times Advocate newspaper article and it's from like February 29th, 2024. I read the article and I learned that Councilmember Martinez could not put an item on the city council agenda by herself. The rules were changed, the rules that have been around for a while, to require two members to put an item on the agenda. You have to get two members to consent to putting an item on the agenda. So why did this rule change happen about six months ago? Well, our city council is comprised of five elected or appointed members. Four members are Republican men who have a reputation of voting in a block. Lots of four to one voting going on here. It's almost like a running joke in the newspaper. Oh, what's the vote today? Oh, four to one, four to one. So you can imagine who the one is. So now this Republican voting block is not only opposing Martinez by voting together, now the city council doesn't even have to listen to whatever she wants to discuss. Morosco's defense in the article was that his goal was to avoid wasting staff time. Well, Martinez replied in the article that Morosco didn't give any example where one person had taken up staff time. So people, I'm sure, you know, we all love Escondido and we want it to thrive. But let's think of our city of Escondido before our political party affiliation. Isn't that the goal of being nonpartisan? That's why the people on the council don't have those, in the parentheses, a little D or R behind your name, because we're all supposed to just want to make the city better instead of censoring someone. So I'm very confused about this because not only has Councilmember Martinez lost her voice, so has 37,000 people in her district one who she represents. So I urge the council to vote to reinstate the rule that one city council member can put an item on the agenda. Thank you for your time and that's what I had to say.
Our next speaker is Becky Rapp.
Good evening, Mayor White and Councilmembers. My name is Becky Rapp and I'm a public, a parent and a public health educator focused on drug prevention primarily among our youth and young adults. And I wanted to bring to your attention a UT article that was published recently referencing a report by the grand jury stating that San Diego police and sheriff should jointly crack down on the cannabis market, particularly the marijuana marketplace that isn't paying taxes and selling illegal product. The grand jury recommends the county develop and publish reports that document the fiscal and law enforcement impacts of legalization and the health impacts of cannabis use on children and seniors, including the development of public education campaigns that highlight these impacts. Local data proves that there's been a significant increase in ER visits among seniors regarding overdosing and negative prescription interactions and an unprecedented number of hospitalizations of young children who ingested the product. The grand jury report emphasizes the influence the drug has on youth and how the negative effects are lasting, permanently changing the brain as it's being developed, affecting attention, decision making, learning, memory and motivation. It also points out that marijuana use in young people is linked to a higher risk of developing psychosis and psychotic disorders. So on behalf of parents and educators, I'd like to ask that you consider this report from the grand jury. They recognize that these businesses can hurt communities. And I look forward to the city of San Diego and the county's assessment and would hope that you will take into account the negative impacts these businesses have had on neighboring cities and the back country of our county. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maria Wallace.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Maria and I lived in Escondido for many years. You guys already kind of know. About one month ago, during public comments, a group of people spoke and handed the council a resolution on alleged border fraud. United Sovereign American USA is the organization that they are a part of and according to Los Angeles time, their main strategy is spreading misinformation regarding election results. Also, New York's Attorney General issued a cease and desist letter to the organization to stop, and I quote, "border deception and intimidation efforts." Volunteers with this organization have confronted borders across the state at their homes falsely claiming to be board of election, election officials and accusing borders of committing felony border fraud. Mayor and councilmembers, these are bad faith actors who want to make voting more difficult for people like me. United Sovereign America wants to submit baseless lawsuits to the court and who is going to pay for this? Of course, we, the taxpayers. There is no evidence of border fraud and we shouldn't be endorsing this kind of campaigns. Thank you.
Our next speaker is TJ Musser.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor White, City Councilmembers and staff. My name is TJ Musser and I live in District Two. So Councilmember Garcia, you represent me. I've probably called Escondido home for the past two years. This city is more than just where I live. It's where I'm building my life, raising my family and connecting with neighbors who share a deep commitment to our community's wellbeing. But when I speak with friends and neighbors, there's a common frustration. They wish it was easier to attend city council meetings, but this 5:00 PM start time is just too early. Let me share a brief story with you. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend a city council meeting. I felt a strong sense of duty to answer the call and contribute to our community. I work over in La Jolla and I had to leave work early around 3:30. I rushed through traffic and I made a few sacrifices at home in order to attend, yet I was still late. When I arrived, this chamber was sparsely populated and I wondered how many other residents who feel the same call to serve simply could not make it because the timing was impossible for them. It is my belief that working families are the future of Escondido. These are voices that deserve to be heard and Escondido isn't alone in this. Our neighboring cities of Vista, San Marcos and Poway recognize the importance of accessibility. They've set their city council meetings at 6 o'clock and even 7:00 PM. These are times that better accommodate the lives of working families and commuters. Why shouldn't Escondido do the same? We should be leading by example and ensure that every resident has the opportunity to participate in the decisions that shape our futures. The current 5:00 PM start time creates an unnecessary barrier. And as a result, many residents are left, feeling left out of the civic process, not because they don't care, but because the timing doesn't allow them to physically be here. I have talked to dozens of other residents who share this same complaint. And to those watching and listening at home, I call upon you to add your voice to this important issue. Please speak out. Changing the start time to 6:00 PM isn't just a matter of convenience, it's a matter of fulfilling our purpose as a community. Ensuring that Escondido's government is accessible to all is not just an obligation, but a responsibility that we should all embrace. We strongly urge the city council to reconsider the start time of our meetings. It can mean the difference between many empty rooms and an empty chamber to those, to one filled with engaged residents who are ready to contribute to our city's future. Thank you for your time listening and considering this important issue.
No further. No further public comment or oral communications.
Okay, moving on to our consent calendar, items one through seven are on consent tonight. Items on consent are approved in a single motion. Do I have a motion to approve items one through seven? Got a motion? I'll second it. Please open the voting.
Voting is open. Motion approved, 5-0.
At this time, I would like to invite Angela Morrow, Director of Utilities, to provide information on an emergency item related to a water main break on Grand Avenue. Per California Government Code, the city council can add an item to the agenda after it has been posted in an emergency situation. This will require a super majority vote.
Great. And Honorable Mayor, as Angela comes forward, this is, there's two actions that need to be taken by the city council. First is to actually place the item on the agenda and after the fact is actually approving the item. So as I articulated in the email yesterday, there was a water main break on Grand Avenue and necessitates approval from the city council. So at this time, if you want to entertain a motion to add the item onto the agenda, you're more than welcome to. If you have any questions, you can ask Angela about that.
I'll move to approve to placing the item on the agenda. Second.
Voting is open. Motion approved, 5-0. And now the item is on the agenda. Angela, time is yours.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Angela Morrow. I'm the Director of Utilities. Here to present the ratification of local emergency proclamation and emergency repair of East Grand Avenue. On Monday, August 12th, water was observed on East Grand Avenue between Rose and Ash Street. City staff responded and determined that there was a failure of an existing 12-inch potable water main resulting in a significant amount of damaged roadway on East Grand Avenue between Harding Way and Ohio Avenue. In addition, a lot of dirt and debris had traveled from that point of failure in both directions, going to Ash on one side and to Rose Street on the other. This is shown by the yellow line on this map. Repairs to the water main began immediately. However, due to the extent of damage to the road, it was determined that the needed road repairs exceeded the scope of city staff and a contractor would be needed to repair the road. Monday afternoon, the city manager, acting in his capacity as a Director of Emergency Services, proclaimed a local emergency, thereby allowing staff to work directly with a contractor for the work necessary to repair the damaged roadway. The emergency repair limits on East Grand Avenue are shown in, on this map with a red line in the figure and they extend from Harding Way to East Ohio Avenue. Utility staff reacted quickly to isolate and repair the 12-inch steel water main, relying on existing loop water infrastructure to keep as many residents with water service as possible during the repair. Approximately 200 customers were without water during the repair. Repairs to the water main were completed and water service was restored by early evening Monday, same day. The emergency repairs that we are asking for include the replacement of approximately 500 feet of roadway on East Grand Avenue from Harding to Ohio. This work did start early morning on Tuesday, August 13th and is anticipated to be completed within a week. At this time, staff requests that council adopt Resolution Number 2024-128, ratifying Proclamation Number 2024-03 by the Director of Emergency Services and declaring that pursuant to the California Contract Code and Escondido Municipal Code, the city council affirms it was appropriate for staff to forego competitive bidding procedures and work with a contractor on the emergency repair of East Grand Avenue. And this concludes staff presentation.
Thank you. Any public comments on this?
No public comment was submitted, but since it wasn't on the agenda, I feel it's worth asking. Is there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item?
So what caused the failure? Do we know? Okay.
It's an older line from the early 60s and it was right next to an older repair that had been done. So once- So once it was excavated, staff did, since it's a steel water main, they could cut it out and weld in a new piece. The positive note is the rest of the water line that they observed was still in good condition.
That was going to be my next question.
It was a small section.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments? No? Then I will make the motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024-128. Motion and second?
Voting is open.
Thank you.
Motion approved, five zero.
Thank you. Onto current business. Item eight is the Fiscal Year 2024 USDA Urban and Community Forestry Program Subaward Agreement. Time is yours.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers. My name is Oscar Romero, Principal Planner in the Planning Division. And today I would like to present a grant of $665,500 awarded to the city of Escondido by the United States Department of Agriculture for the development of an urban and community forestry program. The request before you this evening is to authorize the grant agreement and thereby accepting the USDA's Urban and Community Forestry Grant to create an urban forestry management plan and conduct early tree care. In 2022, the USDA received 1.5 billion in the Inflation Reduction Act and received 842 applications for the Urban and Community Forest Program Grant, which selected 385 recipients nationwide. City staff submitted an application focused on disadvantaged communities resulting in a zero-match requirement. The USDA awarded municipalities developing an urban forestry management plan aimed at increasing the urban forest, improved air quality, with a reduction in carbon emission and increased tree canopies in areas of extreme heat. In 2023, city staff submitted an application to the USDA's grant program requesting a total of $665,500 to cover creation of an urban forestry management plan and early tree care for newly planted trees. The city was one of the few fully funded applications awarded under the program. Following the authorization of the grant agreement, the city plans to phase the program over two and a half years. The initial phase of the project entails staff soliciting a consultant for the development of the urban forestry management program. Subsequently, staff would work with the selected consultants to undertake and complete the draft urban forestry management plan, which would return to you for final adoption. Concurrent to the plan's development, early tree care costs would be covered for the city's annual Arbor Day Planning Program for the 2025 and 2026 calendar years. Grant funding would be allocated toward the following. Creating an urban forestry management plan focused on programs, policies, and projects for the city to maintain, enhance, increase, and ensure resiliency of the city's urban forest. As part of that process, staff anticipate updates to the city's approved street tree list, update to the Center City Parkway Landscape Master Plan, city's street tree ordinance, and an update to the city's landscape ordinance for consistency with the urban forestry management plan. A remaining portion of the funds will go towards early tree care, maintenance of over 200 trees over two years as part of the yearly planting associated with the city's Arbor Staff recommends that city council approve Resolution 2024-127 and authorize the acceptance of the grant in the amount of $665,500 for the implementation of the urban forestry management plan. This concludes staff's presentation. I am available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any public comments on this item?
We have one, Maria Wallace. And as Ms. Wallace comes forward, Patricia Borchman and Laura Hunter submitted comments in support. Please come forward, Maria.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. You already know that I've been here for many years. I support the adoption of Resolution Number 2024-127 from the U.S. Department of Agriculture Urban and Community Forestry Program. Why is urban forestry important? Because trees provide energy conservation, reduction of stormwater runoff, improves air, soil, and water quality. In addition, communities that have healthy urban forests also have higher incomes, which are associated with higher productivity of workers. Urban forestry was a part of the Climate Action Plan and as a member of the Climate Action Group, these are the policies that Climate Commission will have an input on. I'm thankful to the staff for their hard work in securing this grant. Please create a climate commission open to a community members. Thank you.
No further public comment on this item.
Okay, I'll open it up for discussion or entertain a motion from my colleagues. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation. Very excited about this grant opportunity and it looks like you chose a very community-centered partner in this, so I appreciate that and that they have expertise and knowledge and cultural competency in working with diverse communities from disadvantaged neighborhoods. So I really appreciate that. And then just on the application, Section B, that, B1 that talks about program participation, is there anything, it talks about community, like a convening or some sort and like some trainings. Is there any component of this that includes outreach in communities or community engagement in any way?
Yes, actually. This, the urban forestry management program, as soon as we have a consultant onboard, community engagement is going to be a big part of drafting where we do tree planting, what tree inventory looks like, and community input is going to be a big part of that.
Wonderful. I'm excited to hear that. So with that, and I can, I will make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Perfect.
Just, yeah, same here. Everyone loves trees. Who doesn't love trees? It's, and really glad that, for the work that you all put into this and that we were able to receive this and able to accept this. Going back historically, it sounds like Ed Gallo, but you know, for those of us who've been around since the 50s and early 60s, a lot of the areas that, everyone, every street was lined with trees back in the day, you know? And all the areas that we've been spending years, you know, going back in and replanting with appropriate types of trees, all those trees were either, had to be taken out because of sidewalk damage, curb damage, street damage, utility line damage. It just went on and on and on and on. Can't even count the tens of thousands of trees that were removed. And subsequently, little by little, we've been in the process, individuals, families, neighborhoods, communities, the city as a whole, other groups have been in the process of trying to appropriately, or put in appropriate trees that will provide, you know, the shade, the cooling, everything that we want, the beauty to those neighborhoods and communities without all the secondary problems, damages, and a lot of injuries that occurred back in those days as well. So again, thank you very much. Look forward to this and hopefully you won't be able to go down any street in Escondido sometime, anytime in the near future that where you aren't finding trees. So thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. I want to also say thank you for the report. This is great news. I want to echo what my colleague said. I also love trees and I think this is really exciting. You know, we were part of the, a few of us up here were a part of the tree planting last year and I think it really brings something that's communal, something that's nonpartisan, bipartisan, whatever. And I think, you know, I'm really glad to be able to support this and, and just exactly what my colleague said, you know, hopefully in the near future, it's very green. My complex, I'm the HOA president, and unfortunately we had to do the same thing, cutting down trees and it's devastating to see, but this is, I think, going to bring a lot of new energy to the community. So thank you.
So I'll just be very brief. I've been advocating for a management plan for a number of years now, so I'm really excited to see that this is coming to fruition. I've been attending the Arbor Day tree planting. Unfortunately, I can't stay and plant. I usually show up, well, I always show up in a suit because it's a day that I have to go preach. But I'm always there and support. I really enjoy it and I congratulate staff and the community that are supporting this. And I look forward to seeing our community beautified and cooler, which was one of my main concerns, the area when I used to represent District Three. So anyway, thank you very much. Really looking forward to the management plan.
Please open the voting.
Voting is open. Motion approved, five zero.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Here, we'll move on to item nine, which is an amendment to the Mobile Home Rent Review Board Guidelines. And, city attorney, are you the presenter?
I am.
Perfect.
And good evening, Mayor, Council. Mike McGinnis, your city attorney. I have as well with me in the audience, Daniela Lopez, who you most often see with rent review board application hearings. So I have her here to help provide frontline information and answers to questions I probably won't be able to answer. But this evening, you're going to be sitting as the Escondido Mobile Home Rent Review Board and are being asked to consider a series of revisions and amendments to the current Mobile Home Rent Review Board Guidelines. In support of the recommendations, I will cover the following issues. The legal framework for mobile home regulations and the role of the board. We'll discuss the role of the guidelines in your board evaluations. I'll give you a quick overview of the long form and the short form rent increase applications, which you see mostly as the short form, but you've seen some recent long forms. I'll go through the proposed amendments, including the reasons why we're making these recommendations. I will identify the stakeholder input that we've received thus far from both residents as well as the park owners. And finally, I'll finish with the staff recommendations to adopt Resolution Number, Rent Review Board Resolution Number 2024-121. In the state of California, mobile home parks are governed by the Mobile Home Residency Law, which provide a layer of regulations governing the relationship between park owners and park tenants. Overlaying that state law, Escondido's voters approved Proposition K back in 1988. The Escondido Rent Protection Ordinance is codified in the Escondido Municipal Code in Article Five of Chapter 29, and it provides a framework for the way rent increases for Mobile Home Rent Review Board would be handled. The city council, sitting as the board and through its applications reviewed by staff, the board will then decide for requests for rent increases by balancing the interests of the park owners with the residents. Those decisions are documented in the adopted resolution specifying the amount of any rent increase and any other conditions for the application of the increase, such as, for example, the resolution of code violations. The touchstone of any rent increase under Prop K is that it is fair, just, and reasonable under the circumstances presented by way of the application, staff and outside consultant analysis, if that applies, and park owner and tenant comments at the rent control hearing. Proposition K provides general guidance in the way city staff and the board are to go about their work in undertaking rent review increase applications. As a result, a set of Mobile Home Rent Review Board Guidelines was introduced back in the late 1980s to provide more detail to staff and the board on how to implement the dictates of Prop K and allow for some consistency during board hearings in the way they approach a given rent increase application. Over time, there's been a series of amendments to the guidelines. Because Proposition K itself was a ballot measure, any changes to it must be brought to the voters for adoption. However, the guidelines, provided they are not inconsistent with Prop K, can be adopted and amended by simple resolution of the board, and that's what's being brought to you this evening. In that way, the guides are simply complementary to Prop K and are designed to be more flexible and accommodate the needs of the board, the residents, and park owners. The last amendment to the guidelines was in 2020 by Board Resolution Number 2020-04R. The board has received some communications from both impact, a residence group, and park owner representatives about the intent of those groups in reaching a compromise as to the handling of short form applications. Those comments have been included in your record and will be discussed. I think you've got, you'll have some residents talking and park owners too, tonight. As is true with any document, like a set of guidelines for a process, updating to conform to practice is expected and it is desirable. As staff handle inquiries and work through the submitted applications for rent increases, fielding questions from park owners on why staff are taking a particular position, and as the board is working through board hearings, the guidelines should be changed to reflect the best approach to these matters. As I said, as the board knows, there are two different types of rent review applications that come before it. There are the more common short form applications, which were introduced back in the late 1990s to allow for a more expedited rent review process. Staff time for intake and review is manageable and the board evaluation is typically fairly straightforward and streamlined. The board is examining the increase in the Consumer Price Index since the last rent increase and presumes that 90% of that amount is fair, just, and reasonable. That presumption can be rebutted by the residents using the 11 factors in the Prop K, it's Section 29-104G, but it's part of Prop K. Long form applications are more complicated for all involved. The long form application is really just an application that is using the Prop K Ordinance 11 Factors to seek a rent increase. CPI increases in that circumstance are just one of those factors. The city seeks financial documents from the park owner on its operations and retains a consultant to determine a fair, just, and reasonable rate of return for the park owners by examining financial expenses of running a park and certain other factors that are included in Prop K and in this 104G factors. Staff and consultant time can be significant depending on a lot of factors. As well, the board hearings are more protracted as the consultant walks the board through all of the analysis performed to get to the recommendation, recommended increase. As you will recall, we have had two long form hearings in just the past year despite several years without any. In fact, during my time on, sitting as your city attorney, I've only seen the last two and I've been here for seven years. As you will recall as well, the amount of the requested increases were significant in those long forms. As a result, we are looking to incentivize the short form application process. This desire is driven by several factors. Staff bandwidth constraints, eliminating the need for expensive consultants, and the potential for those costs being passed on to the residents as a component of the rent increase. We would like to reduce the opportunity for large increases that might have been, be justified under the long form process as you are looking at all 11 factors. And again, with the short form, you're really just looking at the CPI. As part of that incentivization, despite looking at full cost recovery in many city operations, we have not sought to add a fee for the short form application submittal. It is still submitted without a fee. Additionally, one of the amendments was to clarify what happens if a park owner mistakenly charges a resident rent over the 8% cap in that short form process to allow for the board and not the staff to review that matter. It was a matter of some inconsistency. Again, the idea is to promote the short form application process. The highlights of the amendments we'll be going over tonight, I'm not going to go through all of them. There's a significant amount of cleanup language that's miscellaneous language. I don't believe that either the residents or the park owners are in disagreement with. It's one of these opportunities when we're making some changes to really clean it out. Some of them are very simple. I don't think those, I'm not going to cover all of those. But primarily what we'll be talking about tonight is the long form application increase from 60% of CPI to 90%. That's what prompted really the dialogue that we're having tonight. That was a request that had been outstanding by the park owners, looking for some symmetry. I'll talk about that in a moment. Increasing the long form deposit amount, that's something that's driven by staff. Allowing for the recovery of expenses for the application as a component of the rent increase, we'll talk about that. Clarifying the rent control cap applies to sales with transfer of ownership from resident to resident, talk about that. Will allow for a board review of erroneous rent increases, which I just mentioned. And then it's the miscellaneous non-substantive format grammar, name changes and so forth that are throughout the document. I'm not going to go over that in any detail, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Starting with the CPI increase for long form applications, one of the 11 Prop K factors in Section 104G is the change in the CPI. The guidelines provided that The guidelines provided that 60% of the CPI increase was to be used by the board. This amendment increases that 60% to 90% for the appropriate CPI time period. The use of an amount less than full CPI, this downward adjustment arises from the notion that CPI indexes include costs that are not applicable to the running of a mobile home park, like the cost of groceries, for example. I'm not an economist, and I can't really speak to the best adjustment, if any, but it's fairly well entrenched and it's been used throughout with the short form process. There's no challenge that has ever been made to the downward adjustment from 100 to 90% for the short forms. It's been an accepted practice. When the short form application CPI was adjusted from 75 to 90% as part of the 2020 amendment, there was no request for an adjustment to the long form CPI amount. It sat there in a different section and had not been touched. As a role, as a result, this upward adjustment of the number provides symmetry in the use of CPIs in the long form and short form applications. To treat them differently, in my mind, is not logically consistent or supportable. They're, they're, one of the items that was provided to the council by way of a submission was from IMPACT, and they mention a Rutgers Law Review article, which apparently supports this, this adjustment, this downward adjustment. I've tried to look that up. I went on our West Law account, I could not find it. I found a, a Rutgers Law Journal that, from 2004, that related to increases in New Jersey. I'm not sure that relates to this, but I wish I had a full site. I could provide you more information about the position of the, of IMPACT. Maybe somebody's here that can answer that. The long form deposit has been increased from $5,800 to $7,500 to reflect the amount of costs that we have seen in the past two hearings. These are just deposits, so any unused money is returned to the park owner. If the initial deposit turns out not to be sufficient to complete the review of the application, the park owner must replenish the deposit to allow for completion in order to bring the application forward for a board hearing and determination. Again, this is something that was driven by staff as we look at past practice, past history. Again, in the last two long form rent hearings, park owners sought and recovered, to some extent, the reimbursement of the consultant fees the city required of them for the processing of the applications. This practice is legal under state law and court precedent. This issue has been the subject of comments from, I believe it's Mr. Weiss in particular, and I've shared with you my legal opinion on the matter confidentially. I've also provided a legal analysis in footnote one of the staff report on this very issue. My opinion is that the reimbursement of necessary fees charged by the city for the processing of a rent increase application can be included as a part of the rent review application and rent increase. The, this new provision in section 9J, so I'm using the new sections, not the, the old ones, so there might be some confusion, simply is codifying this practice. This section makes clear that any reimbursed cost must actually be incurred by the park owner, cannot be recovered in a period less than one year, so as to spread out those amounts over time. That at all times, the amount and timing of the recovery is within the discretion of the board, and, most importantly, that any actual cost to be reimbursed must be fair, just, and reasonable for both residents and owners. So you'll hear that refrain time and again. Prop K tells you, fair, just, and reasonable, and the amendments here are designed to stay within those bounds. I, I was asked once before, well, what does that really mean? And I don't know that I can give you any definition of it. It's, I think those words are used to allow the board, based on the factual information provided to you, whether by a consultant, by a resident, by a park owner, to use your best judgment and as a collective to decide what would be fair and just for, and reasonable for those parties. A change in the language, which is part of the amendment in 2020, is also included. This relates to the ability of the park owner to reset the rent rate for mobile homes that the park owns when there's a transfer of ownership. The board has received two letters, I think you may have got them either yesterday or today, from the individuals, some of the individuals involved in the negotiations between the park owners and residents, which generated that last amendment, and they contend that the guidelines did not reflect the deal struck. You saw as well, an email from Ingrid Rainey, who was the lawyer for the park residents, who was involved in those negotiations. And you've been provided that as well. And the position of the park owners, and it seems consistent with that email, is that there was an agreement that the transfer of ownership would not trigger the 8% cap on the rent increase for these select spaces. And this makes sense, as the purpose behind the cap was to protect the economic interests of those persons who owned their coaches.
I'm sorry, I did not receive that email.
The, the letter?
The letter from Ingrid.
It was an, it was an attachment to the letter from Thompson. Did you get the letter from Thompson?
Receive anything from Ingrid Rainey in the, in the last, well, at all?
No, there, there were, there were two letters that were submitted. I thought they went to all council. One was from Western Manufactured Housing.
Yeah.
Committees, and the other one was from Thompson Properties.
Clarification, did you, because I've received them, were they in the public comments you sup, you gave to us?
I did not receive the Thompson letter, the one from Western IMPACT.
Okay.
Manufactured, I did.
The Thompson letter has attached to it this email from Ingrid to several people, dated June 15, 2020. So, happy to pass that along if you want to look at that. I, I think it, I think it confirms what the position of the park owners is now. But I, but I, but I, just to, to go back to 2020, my office was not involved in the negotiations between the park residents and the, and the park owners. That was kind of offset, and you'll see, I'm not CC'd in this exchange. This was brought to us later as part of the, the amendment process in 2020. So, I'm, I'm looking at this, it appears to be the case, so. If you'd just give me one moment. Any change to this lang, so, let, let me, I'll back up a little bit. So if we're making changes, all the changes to this language are within the discretion of the board. All of them are legal, and it's really up to the board as you, these are your guidelines. And do they work for you as you look at the rent review applications? And do they provide the guidance that you would like to have with staff and my office as we are preparing these applications for your review? So I guess, so, the two tenets of this then would be, one, Prop K governs here. The guidelines are a complement to that. But as well, you have a great deal of discretion within the confines of Prop K to devise a system by which the Prop K provisions are implemented. The guidelines is the way we've been doing that since 1988, so that you have authority to make these changes.
Mike, may I just quickly interject? So the letter from Ingrid Rainey, I just found it in the June 24, 2020 council record, so it was distributed to the city council prior to three of you being on the board.
Let me go into the next item. So additionally, as I mentioned earlier about erroneous increases in rent over the 8% cap caused by mathematical errors, the staff has tried to work through the question of who was responsible for rejecting an application in the case that the rent survey reflected overages of the 8% increase, the staff or the board. The guidelines needed clarification so as to allow the intake of the application with certain conditions, and then in a hearing, the board could undertake an examination of those circumstances of whether the rent overage was an unintentional error or not. This is consequential, because if the rent increases over 8%, staff rejects the application, the park owner cannot use the short form process for five years, and you're moving, again, then, towards long form applications. We're trying to incentivize them, and this adjustment is a reasonable approach, in, in our opinion. In June, the proposed amendments were provided to both the residence group, IMPACT, and park owners representatives, who initially sought, who initially sought the amendment of the 60% long form CPI amount. On the resident's side, Mr. Weiss and IMPACT have provided comments. Those comments are part of the record. We received another message from Mr. Weiss, I think on August 13th, and I believe those, that's been, I think that went to you directly. To summarize, the residents believe that the changes to the reimbursement of mandated application review fees are not lawful, and I've already addressed that claim. I think the ability to, to recover those fees, provided they're fair, just, and reasonable, and provided they're a component of the rent increase application, can be, can be included. As well, the residents contend that the changes to the in-place transfers are inconsistent with the negotiated deal in 2020. I believe the park owner letters and email answer that question. There was effort to try and incorporate the deal. If it was imperfect, then this is the time to make that change and, and to make the clarification. In any event, it's a lawful change to the extent you wish to make it, and it, and it works for the board in helping you evaluate these applications. And finally, there's a general belief that the changes to the guidelines might make rents higher for some of the long-term tenants. Again, I believe the letter from Western Manufacturing Housing Communities dated August 13th talks a little bit about that relationship between the park owners and the tenants and the, their need to try and make up some, make up some, from these sub-market rents over a long period of time. I think that's what they're trying to accomplish. And again, if we're, if we're trying to move towards short forms and away from the long forms, this is probably the best way to do that. The park owner's concerns prompted this amendment effort, and that started with the disparity of the CPI language, which I've already talked about. As more detailed in their letters, they've sought clarification on deal points related to the in-place transfers, and that's also included in the amendments. I've already covered the inadvertent rent increases, and again, that helps with staff and, and moving towards the short forms. I think in all other respects, the, the park owners are satisfied with the amendments as presented. So the proposed amendments are legal, they're reasonable, they conform to current practices, they attempt to strike a fair balance between residents and owners, and it's staff's hope that such amendments will continue to promote the use of the short form process. It's within the board's discretion to adopt the amendments, or some of them, that have been attached as Exhibit A to the resolution, and staff is recommending the adoption of that resolution. That concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer questions, as is Danielle.
Thank you. We'll move on to public comments on the item.
Yes, we have eight speakers on this item. First is Louise Reed.
Oh, yeah, no problem, no problem.
Good evening, council, mayor. Thank you so much for your attention. We, first of all, my name is Louise Reed. I live in Escondido, I live in Casa de Amigos, I've been there for 19 years, and I love Escondido, and I love the park that I live in. And we've received the items that the park owners wanted to change. And, you know, we recognize that park owners really need to make money. They need to be, have a good profit so that they can take care of parks, and, and we certainly agree with them, but we just feel that some of the changes that they want are just a little over and above board. So, I'm going to give different sections. Section 76, page four, and that's the CPI policies governing board review sections. So that is the increase, the request to increase the CPI from 60% to 90%. And we feel that really contradicts Resolution 2020-04R, because the resolution agrees for the short form resolution agreed from CPI from .75 to .90. We agreed to that for the short form. Now, the 60% is on the long form, it was never discussed. At that time, excuse me, it should have been discussed, and we would have had a great discussion, discussion on it. So there's really no connection between the CPI rates for short form and for long form. The 60% has always been used based on the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and it shows that many CPI items, food, entertainment, medical care, shelter apparel, they do not pertain to the park's operating expense. The 60% long form rate is written in the existing guidelines, should continue to be used, and I think many of you got one of these earlier today, and this is a Consumer Price Index as of September of 2023, so this is really up to date. And then the next item I have is, I need to speak about section 9J, and that's passing the park owner's application cost to the residents. I've read several of the lawsuits that were mentioned. I was a senior paralegal for many years, read thousands of lawsuits, and the gallant city of Clovis, it does not apply. It was strictly, the city of Clovis did some really kind of nasty things, so, and they got caught for it. Now, and Clovis, I'm sorry, Casha versus Boudreau, I had to take a quick scan of it. There was nothing there that really caught my eye that would have said, yes, that's a really good basis and has precedence. So, we have several other speakers that are going to come up here. They're going to be nice and short, and I want to thank you for your attention, and I think that we need to do a lot more discussion. Thank you.
Our next, our next speaker is Carol Hannigan, and if any of the, and if any of the members of the public who I call, if you'd like, I can actually bring you a handheld microphone, so you don't have to walk down to the podium if you'd prefer. So for Carol Hannigan, I can bring you a microphone, if you just raise your. Would you like to, okay?
Good evening, mayor and city council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, it's my first time. My name is Carol Hannigan, I live in Casa de Amigos, lived there about 10 years. I love the park, we're more than a park, we're a family. The original agreement stated that to ensure effective oversight of vacant, vacant control, each park owner shall submit an accurate and complete annual rent, rent control survey to the city using a spreadsheet provided by the city, no later than October 15th each year. At a minimum, the annual rent control survey shall identify, sorry, I'm nervous, A, each space, B, the tenant's last name, the amount of monthly rent charges for each space on July 1st, a list of items, utilities included in the rent, rent space, the type of rent space, rent control, park-owned, long-term, leased, vacant, or other. A calculation of the average rent space for spaces occupied by a resident owner owned mobile home in the mobile home park, including both rent control and non-rent control spaces, the date of the last vacancy control rate increase, and the date of the last short form CPI rent increase hearing, hearing. The city shall validate the accuracy of the space rent, average space rent, sorry, calculations by making the report available to the public. There is a need for stronger enforcement of non-compliance. Park owners have failed to furnish information specified in A, B, E, and H. The last annual survey received is dated 7/1/21 through 6/30/22. Also, numerous parks neglected to include required information on the report. The latest annual space rent, all parks, is dated July 1st, 2021. IMPACT has made numerous requests for updated information with no reply. This information is necessary for. This information is necessary for oversight of non-compliance. This enforcement request is left to the discretion of the rent review board. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Evelyn Langston. Evelyn, would you like?
Sorry. No, 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 no. I'm left-handed, so everything is. All right. Thank you. Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Evelyn Langston. I am president of Impact. I've also been a resident of Casa Grande for over 21-plus years. And as stated before, I love Escondido, and I love my mobile home park. And as stated before, it's, we're a family. We truly are, and it's a pleasure to be part of the community. Now, getting down to business, the statement is, rent, rent control was not a very popular policy back in the 80s, so the mobile home rent increases were excessive and out of control. Escondido residents recognized the need for some regulation and passed Impact's rent control ordinance to an overwhelming 60% majority. The park owners are again asking for an unfair and unreasonable policies. There is no way there, these requests are consistent with the spirit and language of Prop K. Now, I also want to remind the council that rent control is an Impact initiative, and we should be consulted on all changes in the guidelines attached to Prop K. And in closing, I'd also like to remind the council that every time that we do have a rent increase, that is money that is taken out of Escondido's economy. The park owners aren't spending their money here in Escondido. Us residents are. And so when you do your fiscal report, you should keep that in mind, that, I mean, it's, it works out to like thousands of dollars a, a year, and that could have a slight impact on our fiscal economy. So just bear that in mind. I'd like to spend my extra dollars here in Escondido. I thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Dolores McQuiston.
Yeah.
Honorable mayor and city council members, I'd like to talk about Section 11, Number Eight. This paragraph states that the board shall consider whether any such rent increases, based on all the evidence presented to, were the result of good faith errors and otherwise unintentional violations of these guidelines. Based on the already non-compliance with annual reports to the city, there are no excuses for so-called good faith errors in non-compliance of raising rent rates. All businesses should be responsible for fiscal accuracy. Some park owners have a habit of ignoring certain requirements of managing mobile home parks. One example is the annual park survey report, which provides oversight to monitor rent increase errors. We have not received a report for two years. Using outdated information makes it but, all but impossible to detect errors. There have been no responses to our many requests for current reports. We are asking the rent review board for stronger enforcement penalties for all non-compilant, compiling, issues of the guidelines. Thank you.
Thanks, Dolores. Our next speaker is Joan de Vries. Joan, Joan de Vries?
No.
No, you don't? Okay, not a problem at all. No worries, Joan. All right, our next speaker is Bill Ziegler.
Mayor and council members, my name is Bill Ziegler, and I've lived in Casa de Amigos for 25-plus years. And I've been before the council back in the early 20s when we were having a lot of issues with rent control. I have some issues here that I wish to bring to your attention. On Page Nine, Paragraph ML, the original Rent Review Board 2020 agreement negotiated an up-to-8% increase upon in-place transfer of an existing rent-controlled mobile home from resident to resident. The park owners have asked for a firm 8%, not an up-to, but a firm 8%. Impact sees no need for the change. Let the individual park owners decide what they want to make as a necessary profit. Under Page Nine, Paragraph L, the existing guidelines need to remain in effect as written. Each park has a few long-term residents who have been contributing to the park's income for 20 or more years. The proposed change would delete the words "up-to" and add the word "plus." This change will cause severe harm to the few remaining long-term residents. Fast-growing attrition in the near future will bring low rent rates to market levels. Examples: Carefree Ranch, 184 spaces, less than 7% are long-term residents with lower rents. Casa Grande Estates, 102 spaces, less than 7% are long-term residents with lower rents. The existing guidelines for this paragraph were the result of a negotiated agreement between Impact, park owner representatives, and the city, RRB 2020-04-R. Those terms and conditions listed in the existing guidelines are fair, just, and reasonable. The proposed changes are not. Thank you for your time.
Our next, our next speaker is Daniel Ingram.
Honorable mayor and city council, can everybody hear me? Thank you for hearing me today. Cost of living in California is 38% higher than the national average, and that does not take into account the rampant inflation that we have all been experiencing the past couple of years. We have the highest gas and electric prices in the nation. Some of us can't afford to run our air conditioning or get them fixed. It's been a brutal summer so far, as all of you know. Food prices are out of control. Nationwide, and in California in particular, there are reports that people, and I know some of them, they live in our park, I'm a 25-plus-year resident of Casa de Amigos, are making choices between the number of meals they eat and whether or not they can make rent. In spite of all of this, the mobile home park owners want to raise our rents. We are fixed income. We can't absorb these kinds of costs. They have not lived up to their agreements and their obligations, as has been amply demonstrated or documented by my fellow park residents. They have thumbed their noses at the residents, and frankly, this council as well. But they want to be granted rent increases. They are not held accountable for not living up to their agreements. How can we possibly expect them to live up to whatever agreements come out of this? We can't, and they won't. Somebody is going to have to be held accountable, and if it's not the park owners, who frankly could try tightening their belts the way we've tightened ours, it will probably be some of you in November. I like to walk, and I've got plenty of time on my hands. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Elias Velazquez.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Elias Velazquez, and I would like to speak in support of the mobile home park residents and in opposition of the recommendation on the agenda tonight. Four years ago, in this very chamber, a compromise was made on this poor rising issue. This was to the surprise of the city staff and the then-four-person council. It took a great deal of effort to get to that point, and the community teamwork to get there was a victory for the city. As current council member Mike Morosco said at the time, this agreement makes sure that the most in need are being served correctly for a long time. Four years later, the current city administration made up of some of the same council now seek to backtrack on that deal, making living more expensive for some of our most vulnerable residents. The city has placed their hand on this scale in favor of the mobile park, mobile home park owners, and anyone interested in why this might pass should simply go to the city website and take a look at the people who have donated to the campaigns of some of the city council members who might support this. This kind of, who might support this kind of change. As Councilman Mike Morosco said four years ago, this discussion involves some of the most in need in our community. Please consider serving the least of these in our city like Matthew 25 when voting tonight, and honoring the past agreements of the city on this issue. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Julie Polly.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Elias Velazquez, and I would like to speak in support of the mobile home park residents and in opposition of the recommendation on the agenda tonight. Four years ago, in this very chamber, a compromise was made on this poor rising issue. This was to the surprise of the city staff and the then-four-person council. It took a great deal of effort to get to that point, and the community teamwork to get there was a victory for the city. As current council member Mike Morosco said at the time, this agreement makes sure that the most in need are being served correctly for a long time. Four years later, the current city administration made up of some of the same council now seek to backtrack on that deal, making living more expensive for some of our most vulnerable residents. The city has placed their hand on this scale in favor of the mobile park, mobile home park owners, and anyone interested in why this might pass should simply go to the city website and take a look at the people who have donated to the campaigns of some of the city council members who might support this. This kind of, who might support this kind of change. As Councilwoman Mike Morosco said four years ago, this discussion involves some of the most in need in our community. Please consider serving the least of these in our city like Matthew 25 when voting tonight, and honoring the past agreements of the city on this issue. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Julie Polly.
Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor and council. I'm Julie Polly with the WMA, and I was part of the negotiation group back in 2020. We met to see if we could find an agreement back then to avoid a very divisive and expensive campaign. Park residents wanted the full vacancy de-control model capped. Park owners wanted a full inflationary CPI increase. Needless to say, neither party got what, all of what they wanted. What we agreed to is a partial de-control model that takes an average of the space and adds 8% when a new resident is purchasing a home. There's an, an additional hard cap that grows with the rate of inflation. We also agreed the CPI indexing would increase from 75 to 90%. However, the language that was adopted, the current language today, is not what was agreed upon. The current, and I've given Zach extra copies of Ingrid's email back in 2020 that summarized the agreement. The current model, or language, park owners would never have agreed to, and let me explain why. We have residents that have lived in our park 20 and 30 years. Some of them are here tonight, and we love our long-term residents. They have benefited from decades of sub-inflationary increases and have very, very low rents. In some spaces, rents are in the $400 range. These long-term residents, turnover cannot be treated the same as a space that's been, that has turned over more frequently. To showcase how problematic this current language is, let's take a look at one of these spaces at $400 in a park whose average rent is $900. Under the current language, the new rent for an incoming resident would increase to What we agreed to was an average of the space plus 8%. So in this park where the rents are $900, it would rate, it would increase to $972, still far below a market rent. And this is on a new resident that's coming in, making their purchasing decision on their home, and determining if they can afford to live in our parks. We never would have agreed to a model in perpetuity that, that moved, that was only $400 in perpetuity. So, and the, the letter outlines that. Per the stakeholder agreement, the CPI indexing went from 75 to 90%. The 60% referenced in the long form was completely overlooked because, quite honestly, no one ever used long forms before these amendments in 2020. And finally, there's an additional update that Mr. McGinnis referenced that allows a park owner to back out an offending rent, giving them access to the short form. So park owners are not looking to go back on the 2020 agreement. We're just hoping to get it corrected. We do respectfully ask that you correct these oversights. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there public comments on this item?
All right, if that's the case, I think we are going to move on to, sorry, we, so we're done with public comments, so on to discussion. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I just have a question, just for point of information, since I received, I'm, I'm receiving a lot of information very last minute, which I'm not able to digest ahead of this meeting. But one of the things that was brought up tonight, and as well in a last-minute email, is political contributions by the Western Manufactured Housing Communities Association. And I just want, because that concern has been raised by the public, I just want our city attorney to chime in. Is that, is, is that a reason for someone to recuse themselves? Just, I want to, I really want to lift that up for the public's information.
Sure. I saw that email as well that went to the council, and I've looked at that question under both state law and under the Escondido Municipal Code, which have two different conflicts. There was a recent state law, SB 1439, also known as the Levine Act, which regulates the ability to accept more than $250 and then vote within a 12-month period before or after the, the donation. That does not apply in this case because this is not an application for a license permit or entitlement. This is a review of our guidelines, driven mostly by my office, quite frankly. The impetus was, came from the park owners, but really, what you see in large measure is my office with the assistance of our, our housing people trying to make sure that the guidelines work for us. And again, in the incentivizing. So this, a lot of this is coming from me. The second part of that is the Escondido Municipal Code, and I looked at that as well. And I've spoken, I think I've spoken both with Deputy Mayor and Councilmember Garcia, and asked them very specifically, do they believe that they have any financial, personal interest in this matter, such that they could not give an unbiased review of the matter? There are, they don't have any direct financial interest in, because Western, I'm not sure I'm going to say this right, Western Manufactured Housing Communities doesn't, is not asking for a permit, they're not asking for any money, there's no money happening here, this is guideline review. So I don't see, under the Escondido Municipal Code or under state law, that there is any conflict such that any council member should, by law, recuse themselves. However, all council members always can adopt their own view as to whether or not they believe they can be unbiased with respect to the matter before that, and I would expect all would do that.
Thank you, thank you, City Attorney McGinnis. And I, again, because that came up right before, I wanted to address that issue, and I do want to make some comments a little later, but I would, like I said, I received this, I'm receiving some emails and information very last minute on an important issue, and so I would like to postpone this item until we have thorough time to digest and review the information. So I, I, I would like to postpone this agenda item.
Okay, I have a question. In this letter from Ms. Rainey, there's some, the comments being made about changing the language to owner plus. there's some, the comments being made about changing the language to owner plus eight percent, but the email does state it looks like plus up to eight percent. So, if the language were to not change to plus but remain to up to, the park owners can still request up to eight percent, but then it remains in the purview of the rent review board to implement that eight percent.
Right. And remember, it says may, so they can ask up to that amount. But it's, I think that change doesn't really add that much, but plus eight percent is what they're allowed to, what they would be allowed to ask for.
Okay. I'll open it up for discussion amongst my colleagues. Questions, concerns, comments?
I'm sorry, so can you just clarify that, Mayor? So, we're just making sure that it's not just plus, but it's up to eight.
I didn't, I didn't request anything formally. That was just for my own knowledge and information. I wanted to listen to everybody else speak.
Yeah, I, okay, that sounds good. Yeah, I also had the, that clarifying question that I wanted to address, so I'll open it up. Thank you.
Couple of things. So, I think to everyone's agreement and pleasure, back in 2020, this arrangement was, was hammered out. It was worked out between Impact, between the park, between the city, everyone involved. And at that time, I think there was a great amount of pride and satisfaction with what occurred. And it didn't take long before, when, when, when items came before the council that it became evident that there was a difference in interpretation of what actually was agreed upon as well as recognition of errors and oversights that needed to be clarified and corrected. And it's, it's not like this is something that has happened overnight. This is something that's been going on literally for years to try to get to the point where an agreed-upon sentiment and agreed-upon perspective that everyone felt was for the best of the city of Escondido, in particular those who reside in mobile home parks, was, had some flaws that needed to be examined, rectified and presented by the city's legal experts, which is what we've received this evening. And in, in reading Ms. Rainey's comments from 2020, the recollection and recalling the things that were said and the things that were done, my feeling is that the overall sentiment was that these were the things that everyone assumed were, was occurring, that it wasn't just applying to the short term, the short, short form, thank you, the short form, which everyone agrees is better than the long form, but should have been equally as applicable to the long form, which again, is detrimental to everybody involved. It's challenging, it's difficult, it's expensive and it's very onerous on the residents because of the, the potential of increases that occur through the long form. So, everyone wants to do whatever we can to, to emphasize and to, if at all possible, to utilize the short form because everyone winds up in a better position by utilization of the short form. So, this language in my perspective, from my viewpoint, helps us to get to that point. It helps us to get away from park owners feeling like they have to use the long form in order to overcome some of the oversights which occurred. And if we can take the time to heed what our attorney is advising us, and again, this is not something that was done willy-nilly. This has been done over months and months and years and years to try to get this corrected so that we can all avoid further expensive ballot measures, division within the city and other complications that would ensue if this fall, if this agreement falls apart. I think it's fair, it's just and it's reasonable. I think, as was pointed out, there've always been a series of amendments and guidelines, some of which was corrective language, some of which was language to include or exclude things that weren't thought of at the time that the, those guidelines were implemented and agreed upon by the council. Again, the whole idea is to send, to incentivize the use of the short form. And I think this language is what brings us to that point, which is going to allow us to avoid the long forms as much as possible. I've been on the council for fourteen years and up until last year, we had one long-form application that came to the council. That was, in all honesty, it was a disaster. And I think everyone agreed that we hope we never have to go through that again. Unfortunately, in the past year, we've had two, which is evident that there is a problem with the language and this is correcting that language so we can get back to the business of the short form. I'm sure some other questions and/or comments may come up after hearing my colleagues, but that's my, that's my viewpoint, that's my perspective. And I think that this is a long overdue correction of something that everyone had intended to be implemented back in 2020.
So, I received an email today asking about my recusing myself. So, immediately I reached out to the city attorney to request a review and counsel regarding that. And after a number of our, or time in our conversation, I came back and explained to me, asked a number of questions, I answered and told me that, that as long as I could be impartial, I was, it was okay for me to be able to participate in this and not recuse myself. So, that's regarding me. Part of it is that I live in a mobile home park. I've lived, I've been, I think I would be considered a long-term, long-time resident. I've lived in a mobile home park for the last almost twenty-five years. And my rent is not $400, so whoever mentioned that, maybe I should move to that park. Because mine is not $400. But that, that, you know, you learn things every day. My questions are this, does, I made note of what Impact sent the letter. With page six J, the last paragraph said, "This requested change clearly violates Civil Code MRL 798.49 subsection D, section three." Can you give me a little summary on that?
Sure. And that relates to the reimbursement cost, which I've noted in footnote one. Those are the two Supreme Court cases. And what I think they're saying is that under that code section, which is discussed in the second case, the Cacho case, the claim is that you cannot have a separate charge in a rent fee. And that's certainly not the case here where the component of that rent is the pass-through of the reimbursement of the government required fee. And that's the, the cost for undertaking the application. So, we look at those two cases together, both Gland and Cacho, both of them work together in unison. One says you can, you can recover those fees and the Cacho case says you can separately charge that fee. In that case, it related to a property tax pass-through. But that property tax pass-through was a component of their rent. And so, the case, this is Supreme Court saying that you can do that. Here, what we're doing was we're passing through in a short duration, well, I take that back, in a limited duration, the cost reimbursement as a component of the rent. So, I think in the past, the board would allow for the reimbursement per space over a period of three years, for example. So, that is a component of the rent and that's what you're allowed to do under both of those cases. The mobile home residency law does not prohibit that.
Okay. Then another question that I have is, does this change of language violate Prop K in any way, shape or form?
It does not. In fact, what I would say is Prop K has no reference to a downward adjustment of the CPI. It just says, "Look at the CPI." So, the fact that we're at ninety percent or sixty percent or somewhere in between, you're within, you're within Prop K, but you could have a, you could have a park owner say, "Don't, don't adjust this down." Because there's no adjust, there's no downward adjustment in Prop K. It just says, "Look at the CPI." But as the guideline, what, what the guideline's purpose was, was to allow you to think about the CPI and how it may impact residents and how it is used for, for the park owners. So, I think that's what, that gives the reason to the downward adjustment.
Okay. And regarding the comment that I heard a moment ago, that any increase profit that the park owners receive, those funds are spent outside of Escondido and that it'll impact our, our economy here. Immediately to my mind, it, well, don't the local employees at the park get paid from that? And the improvements in the park get paid for that? At least in the park that I live, they pay for there, the celebrations and the little parties we have and all of those things. And those are, those are, those are things that, that are, help the economy in Escondido by spending in, in Escondido. So, I just wonder about that. And then I also understood, and maybe I misunderstood, but if I understood it correctly, what's, someone disputes the discussion that, or the letter, the email that, that we received regarding the ninety percent, park owner may only request up to ninety percent of the change in CPI, that that was based on a discussion only on the short form and not the long form? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, if I understood that correctly, what would, would there be a difference between the ninety percent of the CPI on the short form? Would that be different than a ninety percent on the long form?
The CPA is going to be the same. So, the CPI number that you're looking at in every application is going to be what it is. You've seen the, the numbers have changed over time. It's a single CPI. It's the same index. So, the ninety percent, whether it's long form or short form, is going to be the same guideline that you're going to be using. The difference, of course, is in short forms, you are presuming that ninety percent is fair, just and reasonable. You're done. The analysis ends at that point unless that presumption is rebutted by some other factors. I'm going to make things up. The, the park is not maintaining its facilities. You look through the other 104G factors and you look at all those things and you say, "That, that isn't fair, just and reasonable in this circumstance because of all these other negative things." So, whether it's long form or short form, ninety percent is just a measurement of some downward adjustment on that CPI, which is an index across the board.
And that wouldn't change?
It would not change.
Okay. A concern I do have is regarding the annual survey. Yeah, I'm concerned about that, that we don't have an up-to-date report. Can I get an explanation as to why is that and how can we remedy that? Because I agree with Impact that that is important to have in order to be able to, to understand.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Danielle Lopez, Housing and Neighborhood Services Manager. I can't speak to before the 2023-24 year, but the 2023-24 year was in fact overlooked. What I can say is now we have a dedicated staff person that's going to be overseeing our mobile home rent control and we have a plan to get all those documents up to date and posted on our website.
Okay, good. And do you have an idea when the residents can expect that?
It's due in October.
Oh, it's due in October. Okay, wonderful. Thank you, because I was concerned about that. And for now, I think that is all that I have. Oh, one more question. Oh, not, not for you, Danielle. Thank you. The eleven factors that we're talking about in addition to the CPI, are we changing anything in the language that's going to remove any of those?
No, those eleven factors, the 104G factors are in Prop K. You can't touch them unless you go back to the voters.
Long or short form?
Doesn't matter. They're the same factors.
Okay. Thank you very much.
In regards to what Councilman Garcia was just talking to, would it be possible to get an agenda item scheduled for, when did you say it was going to be done? October? October to, just to review what was overlooked and the, any changes that are going to be made moving forward? Do I need to say that during future agenda?
As Mayor, you have discretion to be able to add it to the agenda.
Okay, let's add that to the agenda then, in October. Thank you, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. And thank you for everyone who came out here to speak. I think we were provided some information that we didn't receive before and I think we're reflecting on quite a bit of it. And a lot of what you had mentioned, either I had written before or I wrote it down myself. So, one of the things, I'll just go through them just to, for my own thought process. So, the process for long form and short form, essentially what we're looking at is the ninety, the ninety percent. So, if, if an owner wanted to look at a ninety percent increase and the long form didn't do it, they would just go to the short form and that's the same amount, correct? I just want to reiterate.
The handle, the handling of the CPI in both long form and short form will be the same now under the amendment. Now, it will be ninety percent of the CPI will be used.
Okay. Thank you so much. Yep, I'll strike that. And then the annual survey, I agree. I think we, we can overlook that, so I appreciate, I think we should do that in October. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Garcia for that. I really do appreciate that. As clarified, this does not negate or overturn anything in Prop K, including the eleven points.
It does not and you cannot.
Okay, good. And you read, obviously, we did read the correspondence that were sent, was sent to us today. And so, that's good to know. I just want to clarify that that was communicated to all of us. I was also asked, you know, if this was going to be a conflict of interest for me. And I'll say that, you know, we, we have been fair, just and reasonable in the other long forms. Definitely not in, the result that we voted on in the last long form was not to the, well, to the, not necessarily the benefit, but it didn't please the park owners necessarily. I mean, we took, I think, something that was very fair, just, fair and reasonable and we hit a middle ground and it was actually, I believe it was a unanimous vote of five-zero. And that's because we are taking into account all the input that we have here. So, I just wanted to disclose that as well. As the HOA, oh, I'm sorry, one of the other things too, that I just want to make sure, and this reflects back to the long form that we had, the, when we're moving this from sixty percent to ninety percent, it's not a default ninety percent, correct? They are able, we are able to use our discretion to vote up to ninety percent, but we can negotiate down if we see it just.
For the long form?
Yes, the long form.
One, the, actually, it's the first factor of the eleven is a consideration of the CPI. And then you look at a lot of other things as far as the way the park is being operated and its expenses and so forth. In that circumstance, you're looking at, for purposes of your consideration on what's fair, just and reasonable, ninety percent of that number. So, it's fixed in that sense, but it is a component of eleven things. The difference, of course, is in short form, you're only looking at that.
Okay, so then we would be able to, as we did when, when it was audited, some things were removed. So, it brought it down, I believe, to the total, the amount that was requested, to something that the staff and the council found to be reasonable. Why I also say, I'm the president of our HOA and we often have to, on an annual basis, we have to reconsider our HOA fees. And these are fees that are brought upon not just the community, but to the volunteers that are on the board, including myself and my family. Nobody wants to increase this, but you, everybody here knows, as much as I do, that the cost of living, inflation, the cost of labor, material, everything has gone up. And I know that this is really difficult for a lot of people, especially because we also have to consider the cost of insurance. Insurance has gone up drastically. Insurance has gone up drastically. So when we're looking at these costs, you know, it's not, I, you know, speaking with people from the park, speaking with park owners, they're not necess, they're, the increases are not being pocketed. They're going to expenses, they're going to labor, they're going to material, and they're also going to insurance and other, other things that unfortunately is going up all over. I think, and you know, and this is something that I've said before, these decisions that affect the, the, the cost of living, especially with people on fixed incomes, these are probably the hardest decisions that I think some of us have to make here, up here on the council. It's your livelihood, it's your well-being, and we take everything into consideration and we, and we really think it through. So I appreciate the time, the input, and I think that's my feedback. I just want to clarify on those points.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember, go ahead.
All right. Thank you so much. And just not to like further, you know, regarding the report, I was under the impression that that was something that the park owners self, self-report on. So is that completely on the, on city staff to create that? Or does it involve receiving information from the park owners? Because I wasn't sure who that responsibility falls under. I know we're going to address it, but who, who does it fall under?
The responsibility falls on the park owners. However, city staff do send out a reminder and the report.
Okay, got it. And so that one was the one that wasn't done last year?
Correct.
Okay. And I do acknowledge that there have been a lot of transition in our housing and, and just in the city overall. So I understand why things may have happened, but I, and I appreciate that we're going to bring that up publicly and, and address that and make sure that that's not an issue. So thank you for, for that information. Yeah, and I, and I still, it would be in favor of, of holding off on a vote, not, not saying not to address this, but just to postpone it because I feel like I did get new information that I just got in and I like to take my time and, and, and read everything. Just some things that are just standing up to me. I do recall having, you know, the long form process and it not being easy, being confusing. So I acknowledge that it was a painful process. I recall, I believe it was you, Julie, that you wanted to re, speak with staff to talk about some maybe miscommunications. Because some of the, some of the things that I remember is being told that information that's, that, from staff and that was, you know, being debated on whether that was accurate information and who said what. So I remember that being the reason for, for wanting to meet with staff to make things more clear. But what it seems like we're, we're talking about here is going above that. I also, you know, regarding this, you call it the grand, what is it called? You, you give, the twenty twenty negotiation or, or compromise, that it's called, you call it the twenty twenty grand bargain. So I'll just reference it because it's in the letter, but it was a June twenty, you know, I guess this decision was made in June of twenty twenty, which I was not part of the negotiation. You know, I heard about it and we voted on it. One thing that doesn't sit well with me though is that the items that were discussed in the twenty twenty negotiations are now being changed. And when those were changed in twenty twenty, Impact was at the table and your organization was at the table. And you all came to an agreement and it seemed like not everyone was happy, but it was a true compromise. So that was two parties having, you know, going, being able to, to debate and, and bring their perspectives. And this is changing what was agreed to and talked about in that time. And so, and the fact is that, and that same process of them being included and deliberating is not being upheld. And I have a problem with the process of it. And if you guys wouldn't mind, I'm, I'm speaking. So that really, that really is, for me, does not sit well with me. Additionally, I'm hearing residents today saying that, you know, they don't agree with the information. So that, to me, that's why I wanted to postpone or at least, you know, get you both together again to talk, hash some of these out. I think that's the right approach to this. I'm not opposed to changing the guidelines to making things more clear. I have always said I'm not opposed to that. And I know they're just guidelines. But the fact is that things that were discussed in twenty twenty, those folks were not included in these, in these edits and what's being proposed today. And I'm hearing opposition to those changes, except for you. But I'm hearing opposition and I'm not hearing any other support for it. So that's for me, that the right thing to do is to postpone this decision and vote and to bring the two together and try to hash that out further. Because otherwise, it, it does seem like your perception, okay, that you are going back on some agreements. Because they're saying, we are interpreting it differently, and then the other side's saying, oh, no, no, that's not the case. So I think the right thing to do is to try to get on the same page, try to get some more agreement. It's not going to be perfect, I know, but try to get some agreement and show, and, and show good faith effort. Because this just really seems like an undermining, not all, but in some cases, of what was agreed to. And I just want to make sure that everyone has the same information and folks have been consulted and that, that we are equally weighing in the perspectives of both parties that contributed to these amendments. So again, I, if we, if we are to go to a vote this evening, I will not be supporting the changes. I do support revisiting this item, but I encourage you to, to talk to Impact and try to, try to get the facts right because each side is contradicting each other. So who do I listen to? Who's telling the truth? And I'm getting last minute information and I'm supposed to make a decision? That's not how I govern.
Any other questions or comments? Any motions anybody would like to make?
One other point that we need, we all agreed upon the last long form was there was a technicality where, where a, a park owner and/or representative may have misapplied an increase request or demand that once that occurred, there was no, there was no way for them to backtrack without having the penalty of not being able to utilize the short form for a five-year period of time. Is that correct?
Using a short form, yes. So it was a prohibition on being able to use a short form.
Prohibition. And that everyone agreed that there has to be a way in which that can be reexamined for intent, for error, whatever. Everyone makes mistakes. Cities made mistakes in some of their calculations. So I think that, that corrective language is in this.
And, and, and designed to ensure that you can have access to that, but the board will then be making the decision as to the circumstances, how that error took place.
Got it. Whereas last time, we had, we had no ability to make that correction, correct? Okay, thank you. My motion would be to move to approve the recommendations from our city attorney based upon the amount of years and efforts that have gone into getting this language rectified and to make the corrections necessary to the original agreement.
There's been a motion. I, I think I'd like to offer a friendly amendment if possible. In, in Ms. Rainey's email from June fifteenth, twenty twenty, it says, you know, they had a great meeting of the minds, but down, down under ordinance proposal, when owners and tenants seller transfer their mobile home, mobile home ownership, the park may only increase the space rent to the incoming owners and tenants, subject to these specific limitations. And it, in there, in the specific limitations, it does have the language plus up to eight percent. And I would like to offer an amendment to include the up to eight percent language.
I'd agree.
Okay. I'll, I'll second that. Any other comments? Please open the voting.
Voting is open. Motion approved, four oh one, Martinez, no.
All right, moving on to item eleven is a resolution of the city, of the city council of the city of Escondido, establishing a policy on friendship, friendship cities and sister cities. Is this one yours, Councilman?
And Mayor, Mayor, we did have one item before that, the designation of the voting delegate.
Oh, yeah, we'll go to item ten then. We're going to backtrack. Item ten, designation of voting delegate for the League of California Cities Conference.
And Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is an item that comes up every year. There's a conference that takes place with the League of California Cities. The city council can designate one voting delegate and up to two alternates, and it's up to the council's discretion. Currently, Deputy Mayor Garcia serves as the representative for the League of California Cities, and it's at your discretion as to who you'd like to select.
Who are the two alternates right now?
There are no alternates. Oh, I'm sorry. One alternate on the League of California Cities, Councilmember Garcia.
And do either one of you want to be removed from this? No? No? Then my motion would be to keep things as they are. Please open the voting.
Voting is open. Motion approved, five zero.
Now item eleven, resolution of the city council, establishing a policy on friendship cities and sister cities.
Yes, this is an item that was requested by Councilmember Garcia, and there's a resolution drafted in your packet. And it's at your discretion to discuss and potentially entertain that motion.
Wonderful. Thank you. So I have been working with various organizations and had an opportunity to meet with some representatives from Mexico here in Escondido. They came out to see our city and, and what, what, what our city's about. And surprisingly to me, a few weeks later, I got information that there was a city, well, it's called an alcaldia. It's kind of, Mexico City is divided into alcaldias, kind of like New York City has boroughs. And so one of the alcaldias reached out to me and mentioned that they would like to explore a sister friend, a relationship with Escondido. And so I thought it'd be a good idea. Subsequently, I found out that we don't have any policy to even discuss that. So I took it upon myself to do research and write a policy. I based it on the one from San Diego, city of San Diego and some, a couple of cities in Texas, Austin being one of them. And I learned a lot. Nineteen fifty-six, if I remember correctly, President Johnson began this whole process. And then from there, the idea developed into, that was for sister cities and then it developed into friendship cities. That is kind of a stepping stone to be able to get to a sister city and much less formal, but still requires an agreement between them, between the cities. So I'm bringing before my colleagues for us to discuss and, and hopefully agree that this is something that would be positive for our city. It, it talks about economic development between the cities. It talks about art and culture, history, education. So I think it's a wonderful thing for us to do, and I bring it before my colleagues for discussion, answering questions, and go from there.
I'll just say, I, I support the item before us. And I don't remember if I told you this or not, but after we spoke, I also met with a well-known artist, Paco Pablo's from Guadalajara, who mentioned doing the exact same thing with us. So I'm glad you brought forth a policy to establish the way for us to develop these relationships with sister cities. And if you want to make the motion, I'll second it.
Just prior to the motion being made, we do have one public.
Oh, just kidding. Let's go to public comment real quick.
One to be, yeah.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Juan Carlos Tapia. I've been a resident for, in Escondido for about thirty-five years. I was working here for about twenty-five years in Escondido. This is very important for me. I am using the Dali Ranch many times. So when I go over there and I am in the town, I can see the avocado groves in the area. So you can see it from Ballet Center to San Pasqual Ballet and then go to the north. Well, when I was a child, I remember a plate in the park saying the California Avocados Society brought back the child of the avocado who was planted in California. So when I was here, I realized all those avocados are called the Bareriti El Fuerte. El Fuerte is called that because like in Escondido, sometimes we have a freeze and sometimes it's really hot. So on one of those freeze times, the only avocado who stayed was one, and they call it El Fuerte. So coming back to my hometown, I figured it out. Like two blocks away from my grandfather's house, there is a house and there is a place saying the father of the avocado, El Fuerte in California, is here. So I think it's very important to tell the world, to, to, to tell California, the avocados start here in Escondido. Everything is start here. We don't have avocado in San Diego or El Cajon. Everything is start here to the north because the weather is the perfect weather for the avocado. So it's a great opportunity for us to make friendship or sister cities with that city. That city is called Atlisco. From my hometown, Atlisco, the state is Puebla. The Mexico City is in the center and two hours south is Puebla State. We are three minutes away from the Cinco de Mayo Battle. We celebrate the fourth. Because three minutes later, it was the Cinco de Mayo Battle against the French. So the city over there is a very touristic city, Atlisco. And we want to tell them, thank you for the avocado they give us to the United States. So we have to be very proud here in Escondido because we are the beginning of the holy avocado, the holy guacamole. Everywhere. So it's start here in, 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 in Escondido and it goes all the way to the north. So it's a great opportunity for us to put a name of Escondido in the beginning because we have Fall Brook.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but your, your time has expired. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Thank you.
So, thank you very much. It's very important to have sister cities or friendship cities.
Thank you.
No for the public comment.
Very, very well. I would move that we accept the policy on sister city, friendship cities as drafted in our packet.
I'll second that and open it up for discussion for anybody else. Go ahead.
Great. I've never heard of a friendship city, but I've heard of sister cities. And I know some cities have a lot of them and a lot of them end up being like from Japan. So actually, I just wanted to share because most of my colleagues weren't here at the time. But Juan Carlos did approach me and another, one, another colleague, gosh, at least before COVID, like twenty nineteen. And he, he was the person that I learned about the history of avocado here in Escondido that in his hometown of Atlisco, Puebla, that that's the, you know, the Fuerte avocado plant, the father plant gave birth to the one here and that gave birth to the avocado tree. So I thought that was amazing. And there was actually back and forth conversations with the city council in Atli School to say, hey, what, what would a city, sister city look like? And they have avocado agro tourism over there and we're doing ag tech stuff here. So anyways, the, the conversations kind of stopped because of COVID and then there's changes in, you know, there's elections and there's changes in people. And, but anyways, I just want to say that I appreciate the, the, the resolution and I would really want to, you know, participate in this and, and have a process that we could, I don't know if it's just we have one or we have several sister cities or maybe, again, I don't know what the norm is because I've never gone through the process. Maybe each council member gets to choose one and then we, you know, we have a cap or something. Just, I'm just throwing that out there because I don't know if that's included in the language. But I think there's a very unique opportunity and connection with Atli School. And, and there's also been like, they've given Loteria, I think I gave you one, Councilmember Garcia of Atli School. So I would really love to like open up this process and, and really participate in recommending. And I, I don't know if you're proposing that we just have one or if that's something we can discuss in the future on having multiple sister cities because it seems like we've been approached by different communities.
I've, in my research, I found that some cities only have one and that's it. No more sister cities whatsoever. I also found other cities that have multiple cities. Some say only one per country, others are just one period. I also found that other ones have multiple sister cities in the same country. I also found that other ones have multiple sister cities in the same country. So that's what kind of gave me the, or gave me the idea to specifically not put in that we're limited. So there's no limit. And I also included that any of us have the opportunity to be able to, it's part of the policy, the resolution, that any of us have the opportunity to be able to bring forth and obviously with, with a support from the rest of the council, with the majority. But yeah, each, any one of us has the opportunity to be able to do that. And there's no limit. It's not written into the specifically in order not to limit who we would like to or if we'd like to have two from the same country.
Okay. And then can you just give me a, a description of the difference between friendship city and sister cities? Are you using those interchangeably?
No, they're not. A sister city requires it to be registered. Well, first of all, we would have to be members of the Sister City International, which is an organization that works with the federal government. So we would have to be a member first. And then from there, whomever we decide as a council to have a sister city relationship with needs to be registered with them. They work with the federal government and continue those relationships going. It's a more of a formal process. A friendship is, some consider it to be a step to a sister city of a, less of a formal relationship where we decide it doesn't have to be registered with SCI, the sister city, with SCI. So that's the difference, main difference between the both.
Okay, well, like I said, I've never heard of a friendship city, but I like it because I do know that in those international discussions, you know, different countries have different processes and things that they have to go through. So I feel that the friendship cities really provides flexibility and that we can consider both and, and participate in that.
That was the point.
Thank you. I'll support.
Okay, there's a motion and second. Please open the voting.
Voting is open. Motion approved, five zero.
Great. Item twelve for future agenda was already stated for the reporting guidelines concerning the mobile home park. Is there anybody, anybody have anything else they'd like to add to a future agenda? If not, then Councilwoman Martinez, will you please kick us off with our subcommittee and other reports?
So I do not have any subcommittee reports and my San Diego River Park JPA meeting that was scheduled for Friday of this week has been canceled for this month.
Sir?
Real quick, for those who are interested, this coming Friday, there's going to be a re-grand opening for Walmart off of Grand Avenue here in Escondido. It'll be ten o'clock, eight o'clock in the morning, eight o'clock in the morning this coming Friday. And then next Wednesday, Citracato Parkway ribbon cutting, brand opening celebration. Long time coming, the twenty-first at eight o'clock, excuse me, at ten o'clock.
Just a couple of things. Let me see, Saturday was the PAL basketball to untie between Escondido Police and the PAL teams. And I hear that the police department won. So it's now seven to six rather than six, six. So that was interesting and that was exciting. This is what I hear. I wanted to go, but unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend at the last minute. But I think it was great that we mentioned it. Also, the mall had a back-to-school fashion show in which I had the opportunity to model. No, I'm just kidding. No modeling for me, but I happened to be in, there and had, they gave me a moment to be able to address the, the audience and have a good time there and see the, the, the models show the different variety of clothes that are being shown for this coming school year. So anyway, that was a lot of fun. Our mall is, I'm learning more and more and more how incredible North County Mall is and all the work they're doing for our community. So thank you very much. And that's the end of my report.
As always, just meeting with different constituents. And as always, thank you for the privilege of serving you.
Saturday was a busy day for the White family. We started off celebrating Escondido Street Stewards' Day in Escondido and spending time cleaning up downtown, specifically Grand Avenue and the alleyways. That was fun. Then we went on to the grand opening for the Ten Habitat for Humanity Homes. That was kind of a neat experience that each family was awarded a, a loan or a grant from the city to help them as a first-time home buyer. It was cool to listen to some of their stories. We also attended the Police Athletic League fundraiser. Then moved on to Zane Kincaid's mural unveiling on Grand Avenue. And if you haven't seen this one, it is spectacular. He projected eight old historic photos of the city of Escondido on the wall at night, traced them, painted them in black and white, and each one tells a very unique, cool story. That's definitely worth checking out on the side of the photographer's eye, if I'm not mistaken. Then we moved on to the Escondido Art Association Open House. And just a reminder that also on Friday is the Prism and Pendulum Grand Opening. And that'll conclude my report. City managers, report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to let the council and the public know that the city's Fall Recreation Guide is now available. In that guide, you'll find information on a broad range of courses from cooking to pickleball. So you can check out the guide and register for our courses and programs on the city's website at escondido.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comments? This meeting's adjourned.